Recording in progress.
Chaska City Council Meeting for Monday, December 19th, 2022. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:00. Will you please stand and join me in Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Welcome on this cool evening. Elise, would you call roll, please?
Councilmember Hatfield.
Here.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Here.
Councilmember Warren.
Here.
Councilmember Grau.
Here.
Mayor Winchell.
Here.
All right, moves us to item four, adopting the agenda. Are there, at this point, corrections or additions? If not, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hubbard?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post same sign. Motion carries. Next we move into visitor presentation. And visitor, under visitor presentation, there can be no action taken, but we are, this is an opportunity for visitors to speak. And I have Stephanie Poplar here tonight, so come on up, Steph.
This can get long, but I'll try to make it short.
Okay.
Your staff brought a, basically, settlement agreement before you, August 19, 2019. I was not happy. One, nobody told us to be here that night. How can we be here when nobody lets us know? And then you let them go on and say what they said about us. Would you like to know what that is?
Well, I, I mean, I, I kind of remember the meeting. It said that we weren't going to go with paying the fees, yeah. Or paying the money.
You were tabling the meeting, or that's part of it. You were going to table it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Let me start then.
This is a comment period only, and I advise you not to say anything.
Yep, that's right. And I do, I'm sorry, I do have to follow that, that this is really, it's your, your opportunity to speak to us.
Yes.
We cannot really take action, or I'm not going to get into something from years ago.
No, no, I, no.
Okay.
But I need to get this off my chest.
Okay.
I can't walk into a restaurant with my friends anymore without freaking out. You have caused me such great pain over this. Okay. Please don't assume for us what we do and do not know. When I first walked into this building in 2017, the spring of 2017, I researched that easement. I called many, many lawyers. They told me all the same thing. It's good. I even contacted the State Attorney General's office. So I don't know why I kept hearing, "We didn't know what we had. We didn't know what we had." Didn't know the value of it. That's a bunch of bull. I had to write this down because I knew I'd forget everything. When I came in here in the spring, I said it was 2017, I had to talk to Matt Clark. Not happy. But the minute I sat down, he starts in with, "That easement you have, that doesn't mean anything. Forget about it." No. After all the research I did, after all the many lawyers, no, it is not going to happen. Then he tells me, "The city wants you to go a different way. The south side of the courthouse, go up and over that. It's a lot easier to go." Army Corps of Avengers says, "No, you will have to spend money for us to go over that side." And then he tells me to run along the bottom of the dyke. Isn't that going to wreck the bottom of the dyke and you're going to have more problems? It doesn't make any sense to me. And then he goes, "Well, then you can get to your bridge." Well, you get to our bridge and that takes us out. Our property is over here. Our bridge is here. That takes us out. That made no sense to me. So I contacted him, contacted him. I get no results. I had to go get a lawyer. But before I did that, I came to see you. And I believe you were there? I'm not sure. There were people there. I gave you the proof that our road should have been built. I contacted the Army Corps. They were very friendly, very nice. And they gave me everything I needed. I had the easement. I did not have this memorandum of sale. But they gave me drawings. Every damn drawing had our road in it. So where's the money? They told me. They coughed up 75% of the cost of that flood project. You guys only had to come up with 25%. You had to have the money for that road. It's in each and every drawing. What'd you do with it? Nobody can answer me any questions. Your staff could not help me find anything, so that's why I contacted the Army Corps. I just don't understand how you people do business here. But now you said something about it's not fair. The precedent is upsetting or is upsetting. What isn't fair? It's a legal document. Did you know we sued you? We sued you and the judge wants more. But your lawyer for this case, the, he needed a pause because he didn't know the whole situation. We're still in pots. We're still waiting on them to decide what the hell they want to do. 2018, that's when I got the lawyer. But in January of 2018, Matt Clark had called up the Army Corps. Army Corps told him exactly what needed to be done. A full Section 408. That's what needs to be done. Apparently, he did not like that answer, and Bill Monk calls him up. And the Army Corps tells me, it was a long and lengthy conversation. But he says he finally got through to him that, as Section 408 needs to be done. You, people have rules. You make up your ordinance or whatever we have to follow. Why, what's so hard about that? A Section 408? Yeah, it's long and complicated. It's a lot of work to do. But it's been 20-plus years. So I don't understand why he has to keep calling them. He called again in 2021. Contacted him again. What do I have to do? They tell him. Apparently, he submitted something on November 8th of 2021. The Army Corps sends him a letter. This is what you have to do. I, twice, the Army Corps sent the same damn letter. I don't understand why you can't comprehend that. Look it up. It's easy to find. I, I, I don't know. Now, you asked him if we negotiated in good faith. Yes. I might have sounded a little demanding, but yes, I gave him everything the Army Corps gave me. The only thing I kind of was a little demanding on, I gave them the option of the settlement agreement. The only difference is, I wanted an estimate of that road from an actual contractor that could do it. No, I get an email from Matt Clark telling me, "This much for this kind of gravel, this much for that kind of gravel." No, no, I wanted from the actual contractor. That way, my family could get together and we would discuss it. And I said, "I will take a portion of that." But I wanted, you know, I wanted them to negotiate with us. Not happening. So then you said something about, because we aren't here, that speaks to our character. And then it was, "But they probably know what they're walking into with a couple of giggles from over on this side." You were insinuating we're cowards, that we're afraid to come up here. We're picking on the wrong family. We are not cowards. Definitely not. Now I'm here. Are you looking me in my eyes? And I'll tell you why you should have voted yes for that. It was your cheapest way out at the time. We're not holding you over a barrel. I've never used, well, if they would talk to me, I would never have used that easement as a negotiating tactic or trying to get money out of you people. I live here, for Pete's sakes. I pay my taxes. Part of it goes to you. So I don't understand how you can make comments like that about us. And you, Mr. Mayor, you called, my brother called you his friend. I think he would be a little bit more pickier now, after hearing what you said. I don't think that would be happening anymore. You don't think he'd let what you said go by? He would have, and you know he would have been up your face. You know it. And then you said, you thought you were helping us. Because they had the grant money, free money. That's true. They had the grant money. They didn't work to find it. We did. We were trying to help you. So your comments are just way out of line. Can you do that? Talk behind people's backs like that? Do you do that to companies that come in here? That's not fair. It's like, I don't know. I'll say it. It's like, you guys get these positions. You get voted in. But I'll tell you, I didn't vote for you and I didn't vote for you. You, you get these positions, and all of a sudden you turn into like demigods or something. And this is your little Mount Olympus. Your word is law. You tell us what we can and cannot do. We pay your salaries. Really, I don't know why. I, did you see every, I suppose you won't answer me. Did you see everything that I gave them? Did you see the easement? Did you see the memorandum of sale? Did you see my drawings? These are the actual drawings from back then, from the Army Corps. Show, well, this one doesn't show much. It just shows where our bridge is. Courthouse Lake. But here. Here's my road. Coming like this. Cross this, this is the dyke. Cross the prick to the bridge. It's in that one. It's in the first one. It's in this one again. Clearly, there's a road here, right in here. What happened to the money? Somebody knows. Did you bother talking to Mr. Rippey, Bacorni, and Monk? They were the ones back here handling the flood project. Nobody can tell me anything. It's not fair. I, I do not understand. If he didn't show you all that information, how can you make a decision, an informed decision? I don't know. I think something else should be done. I think he should be running the show instead of the rest of you. Pretty sad that you can't come to your city and ask them to stand up for a legal document. Let's go to court. I don't care. We got it, we got it handled. So it costs you a little money. We got it handled. Let's go. I don't care. My family wants to go. That's it. I'll leave. Pretty disgusted with all of you.
Can I comment, not on the court case, but just as a personal statement? That I never view myself as more important than anyone in the city of Chaska. I am just another resident who makes decisions and acts on feedback. And so I have a career in human resources, and I do this. Both of those tell me that I can never make everyone happy, and I know that. And I make this statement because I don't feel it's appropriate for my, or any of us, to be attacked on a personal level and to be accused of anything. So I only feel it's fair that I be able to say something back to say that I am just like every resident in Chaska. I decided to sit up here. I listen. I listen to other opinions and I make decisions. So it has nothing to do with that situation, but it's, when, when, when my character gets challenged, I will defend my character. Thank you.
I want to jump in quick. As Councilmember Grau alluded to, this is a matter that's in litigation at the moment. And so, councilmembers, I'd advise you not to say anything. Mr. Grau has beaten me to the punch, but I think you all probably feel the same as Mr. Grau. And we'll just leave this matter for public comment.
You know, one of the things I will say is, obviously, some of you guys probably weren't even on the council at the time that that decision or that discussion actually occurred. And so if there is a desire, like we talked about, what Ms. Poplar is talking about is in litigation right now. She has an attorney representing her. We, we have to communicate through our attorney. And, and so if we wanted to have the council find out more specifically about where that case is at and, and sort of, you know, more of the detail behind it to be able to get everybody up to speed if you're not aware of what's going on, I would highly suggest that we have a closed session. We're able to have a closed session for things that are in litigation and be able to provide you all the information on that, the actual case. So up to you guys if you want that or not, but we could certainly talk to, the League of Minnesota Cities is representing this, us in this, and they've been representing us for three, four years, probably maybe longer, three, four, some years on this. It has not come to a resolution yet, and certainly would be happy to, to be able to, to have the attorney come in and give, you know, more of an explanation of what the case is, all that stuff. So it's up to you guys whether you want that or not.
Like you're, you mean that on me?
No. So, and, and like, like our attorney said, we really can't comment on what's happening because it's in litigation. But do we, as a council, feel you'd like to get more information, understand it better?
I'm, I'm open to whatever the rest of the council feels is necessary and appropriate.
Is that where we would meet, like a work session ahead of a council meeting?
Yeah, or we can actually, we can go in, with a closed session, you have to open the open meeting first and then go into closed session, come back. So it's just as easy. Because we have, you know, we could look at trying to get something set up for the 9th, if the attorney is available. We have interviews that night, so we could just, we don't have a ton on the 9th because it's our first meeting of the year. So we could always come into open session, go into closed session, have the attorney give us a briefing on it, and then come back into open session afterwards.
And, and we'd still have time for interviews?
No, we do the interviews before. So we wouldn't do that until 7:00 at the meeting.
Oh, oh, I got you. Got you, got you, got you.
I'm open to it. I think it's always important to be informed and, 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 you know, obviously, you have a person who wants us to be more informed, so I don't see any issue. Information is always good.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Well, Elise and I will work, and we'll, we'll try for the 9th. It's obviously dependent on the attorney's availability, but we'll get something set up and then be able to provide you information on that, so.
Because we're the, we're split there, then the next one is?
The 9th, and then it's the 23rd.
Or is it the, yeah.
Mark Loether King is in there?
16th. That's the 16th. Yep. Yeah, we'll get something set up.
Okay. Yeah, it'll be good. And then, because I'm sure anybody wa, anybody watching is just as confused, so.
Yep.
You know, to give a little more background on it will be good.
Right.
Anyone else here under visitor presentation not associated to an agenda? Kevin, anybody online?
It doesn't appear so for the visitor presentation.
Okay. All right. We'll move on to approving previous meeting minutes. And this is approving the November 7th, November 21st, and December 5th council meetings. But the 21st wasn't at our canvassing?
The 17th is your canvassing.
17th is what? Canvas?
Canvassing.
Okay. I just, because it says council meetings, I knew one of them was canvassing, so I want to be clear. So approving the November 17th canvass, and then our council meetings on November 21st and December 5th council meetings.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Grau.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hubbard to approve previous meeting minutes. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Moves us into item seven. This is consent items. Again, these are items that need our approval, but not necessarily needing conversation, but any and all can be pulled at any point and discussed, so. With that, is there anyone that's got any, any comments, concerns on consent? If not, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve consent.
Motion by Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hubbard. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Moves the item eight. This is a public hearing, adopt a resolution 2022-144, approving right-of-way easement vacation of downtown block 16.
Mayor, Councilmember, this is one coming out of the planning commission. I'll turn it over to Nate.
All right. Mayor and councilmembers, this is an item, right-of-way vacation. It's being recommended this evening. It's for the alleyway that's located on block 16. So here in front of you is an aerial photograph, map of block 16. So you might recall recently, we had a project that came through for this parcel, to split that into, I think it was three, no, four.
No. Four.
Four. Single-family homes, yep, in this location. And through that discussion, and as we were reviewing it, a question came up about the alley and what would make the most sense for the future status of that. Presently today, this is an alleyway that was part of the city's original, you know, plat when the city was established, which was common throughout all of the blocks in downtown. And just sort of part of how that was done at the time. The reality is on this site, due to the grade that exists, alley was never established. It would be very difficult to do so. And so, can, you know, through the process of, of this parcel being developed, the discussion was had about what would make some sense. And so the recommendation here is that the right-of-way be vacated. We would continue to maintain a drainage and utility easement over there because there are utilities that go through there. But that right-of-way that gets vacated, let me move on here. This is a little bit easier. Would effectively be split north-south down the center. And then you can imagine the property lines being extended to that center line. So it'd basically just be, you know, turned over to the existing property owners out there.
How, how wide is it?
It's about, usually these right-of-ways are something like 20 to 24 feet. I don't have the exact measurement in front of me right now, but. Our intention with this would be that before we record that vacation of the right-of-way, that our Public Works, who have been working with them, would go out and, you know, do an assessment and removal of any hazard trees that exist in that right-of-way. Because it is currently the cities to maintain, and those trees have grown there during the city's time of our responsibility to maintain it. So the intention is that we would, you know, clean that up and not create an issue for the folks who would ultimately be controlling those properties as a result of this action.
Nate, is that on top of the hill or is that below the hill? I'm trying to get that figured out.
Um, so.
Mostly on top.
There's, there's sort of a hill that goes right here, right? And this alleyway, and I know there's a resident here who, who lives right here, and he may be able to provide a better detailed response than me, but my understanding from the times I've been out here is that the alleyway is effectively right on top of that street. And so it's situated in a way that there's really no ability to put an effective alley in there. And honestly, the way that it's developed out here, you've got a garage here that goes onto Sixth. You've got a garage here that goes onto Maple. But there are no, you know, garages or anything that need to be accessed through an alleyway back here. The proposed, you know, the homes that are proposed to be built here would have accesses on the Maple Street. There's nothing planned to connect with that right-of-way.
So on that right-of-way, essentially, like the existing houses there, they would take half of that right-of-way, and the other half of the right-of-way goes to the new development? Is that how that?
Yep.
By center line. I was just making sure I understood what that meant.
Yep.
But there's a power line that goes through there. That's where they're fed? Or did they take that out and bury that now?
There is a power line that goes through there, and that's, I don't believe, planned to be buried, at least not in the near term. So that's why we need that drainage and utility.
That's why we need that utility.
And even if it were buried in the future, you know, the need for that drainage and utility easement would remain.
Would the residents have, like, the ability to influence if, like, trees were being taken down or anything?
I think our Public Works could work with them. Typically, what we do is go out and mark what's going to be taken down and removed before we do that. And then that gives that opportunity for the residents to, you know, take a look and understand what's going to happen.
And I know that's, that's been a concern of Mr. May, is that wanting to have those trees taken care of before they become your property.
Yep.
And I'll, I'll give you an opportunity, I'll give you an opportunity to come up as soon as we get done up here, okay?
And this is a, a public hearing is needed, so, yep.
I just want to make sure we had all of our questions up here answered, and then, and then we'll open the public hearing up. So, everybody otherwise good up here?
Good.
All right. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing up at 7:28. Now, if there's anyone that would like to come up and speak, please come up, state your name and address, if you would, please.
My name is Paul May, M-A-Y. I live at 503 Beach Street. I'm on the lowest end of that alleyway going through. First of all, I have no objection to your abandoning your easement. I do have a problem that's been there for well over 100 years. I've lived there 50 years myself. There are pine trees through that alleyway at the end of my lot. There are four trees that I think the city has a responsibility of removing if they're going to give the property to us to use. They were here last Tuesday, I believe, and they cut two of the dead trees out. I was requesting that four trees be removed. The two they took out were totally dead from bottom to top, about 50 feet. There are two more trees in there that are about that big around. One of them has a couple of green branches at the top of it. The tree is basically dead. I'd like to see that one removed. The other one is further into the, the alley right-of-way going up the hill. That tree sits at about this angle. Again, it's got a few green branches on the top, but it is basically dead. That tree overhangs my storied shed and endangers my garage if it falls. The tree was straight. Like I said, it's at this angle now. I think if you want to vacate your easement on it, that you should remove those two trees that they shouldn't be my expense to take out. And I'd like.
And I, it sounds like that's already discussed, that we'd be looking at that, right?
That's my understanding in talking with Public Works, but we can circle back with them and make sure that, you know, it sounds like maybe they were out there, but we can circle back.
I wasn't home the day you removed them. I got home, you guys were gone. You did a nice job. a nice job of removing them, I'm not complaining about that.
Yeah, yeah.
But there, there's two that is, you know, the top three or four feet is still alive, and the one bothers me because it's leaning now, if it goes over, I've got some substantial losses, and you've had the property, I've lived there a little over fifty years, and you never even trimmed the trees in that alleyway.
And that's in the right-of-way?
Pardon me?
That's in the right-of-way?
That's in that right-of-way that you want to, I'm, I'm just here to request that you.
Yep.
Remove the other two trees.
Well, like I said, we'll, we'll look into that, and, and Public Works probably had directions for those two trees, and you'd never cut a tree down unless it's for sure, they don't take it down because they think it's right, because it might be, can't put it back once it's taken down.
I, I've worked with Public Works for the last two years, and I finally got somebody, they've come down and looked at them, and then they disappear, and six months later, I'm back up, still trying to get them removed.
Okay.
We'll make sure they get sticked through.
Yeah, we'll, look at that, it's only fair.
With your assurance, then I have no other problems with you coming in, thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Anyone else? Alright, uh, we'll go ahead and we'll close that public hearing at, Kevin, is there anybody online?
I, I don't believe so, if anyone is here for the public hearing, can you please raise your hand? No, I think you're good to proceed.
Okay, alright, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at seven thirty-two, and now we would, we would look for direction from council on what, what our, what our thoughts are, otherwise we're looking at adopting resolution twenty twenty-two dash one forty-four, approving the right-of-way easement vacation on block sixteen.
I think, I, we didn't hear from any other residents, I would, any other residents have anything to say about, okay, the ones that lived building there?
Not that I'm aware of.
I think they've had it for, it's just kind of been there for so long that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I get Mr. and Mr. May's position is, if you have trees, if you're getting property, you don't have to all of a sudden deal with trees that you are more responsible for, so to me, that's only fair.
Yeah, so, so I take it from that comment that we would do the same sort of evaluation against the other trees for the other properties that would be receiving those trees, but further north.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Now, I assume that's already been surveyed, so they know where the right-of-way is, right? That would have been surveyed before we went in there, right? Or before we did this?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so it's got to be pretty clear where the, alright.
Well, we'll probably double check.
Yeah, well, that's what I say, it's just, I think it's, it's important that, you know, we get it right.
Like you said, you can't put them back. It's easy to take them down, it's hard to put them back up.
You can't put them back up, so you tell, so you get complete direction, take them down, you always leave them standing.
Want to be that guy with the chainsaw?
Yeah. So, alright, um, alright, so you didn't get any calls, Ms. Hetfield?
No, I did not.
Okay, alright, I think it's, like I say, it's a legit ask, so, alright, alright, anyone? Want to make a motion?
Um, I'll make, sure, go ahead.
I'll make the motion, I don't have it right in front of me.
I got it. So I have a motion by Councilmember Hetfield.
Oh, second.
Second by Councilmember Wong, and that's adopting resolution twenty twenty-two dash one forty-four, approving right-of-way easement vacation of a downtown block sixteen, okay, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post name sign. Motion carries, alright, moves us to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash one forty-seven, the twenty twenty-three tax levy and general enterprise fund budgets.
Uh, Mayor and Councilmember, as you remember, at our December fifth meeting, we did have the truth in taxation hearing for our plenary two thousand twenty-three tax levy and our general fund budget, at tonight's meeting, as we talked about at the last meeting, the last meeting was only to take comments on that, and then provide any final feedback coming back for tonight, where we actually adopt the, the levy and, and the budget for twenty twenty-three, establish the budgets for each of our enterprise funds, and then the action after this would actually be formally establishing the utility rates based on that budget for twenty twenty-three, so I'm assuming you don't want me to go through the entire presentation, so I'll just hit the highlights of, of what we talked about. First of all, you know, the major discussion items for twenty twenty-three was continuing our utilization of our tax levy policy, which is basically making sure that we capture new growth, and then inflation for, you know, making sure that we capture those things for if we kept our service levels the same, and then only add on to that if we were actually adding services beyond that, continued implementation of our camp program, our capital asset maintenance program, that's actually part of our base levy, so that does not add on to that, continuation of year three of our staffing study plan, and then the fourth one that we spent most of our time talking about was commencing implementation of our four-year building improvement plan to address deficiencies in our general fund, general fund facilities, so the first, establishing our base tax levy, even though inflation has run as high as nine percent over the year, we sort of established five percent as being the number that we use from a budgetary perspective, plus we taught, saw two point one seven percent new growth in the community, so new growth, we need to make sure that we capture, so that we make sure that they're contributing both their tax base and their resources towards the services that we provide, so that we're able to provide more services to additional residents in the community. So the base part of the levy represents seven point two eight percent, which is about five dollars per month on a median value home, which is about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars for two thousand twenty-three taxes payable. Again, continuing, continuation of the implementation of our capital asset maintenance program, so again, that's something that was established back, finished in two thousand seventeen, where we identified a million dollars that would go towards all those basic type of things that we reinvest back into the community, so trails, road surfaces, park maintenance, parking lot maintenance, all those different things that, that we take care of, assets in the community that our residents use, so we do have that built into the budget, it doesn't, it's part of that base levy, so it doesn't add anything additional beyond that. I did put in the staff report what to expect for next year for our camp program, we have our street overlay program, which will include Western Ridge, Autumn Wood South, and Wildflower Lane, that's about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, we have about five hundred thousand dollars that's targeted for major reinvestment in City Square Park, because of forty-one being closed next summer, and then trail resurfacing three miles would be sixty thousand dollars. Our staffing study, the third and fourth year implementation of that, we, again, identified a shortage based on the service levels that we're providing of about fifteen, sixteen employees, and then broke it into a four-year period to, to implement those, to take it one chunk at a time, this, next year would be the third of fourth, of the four years to implement that program, it's an additional four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars to the levy itself, the planned positions for two thousand twenty-three would be a second city planner position, an economic development coordinator, a water sewer maintenance worker, a park maintenance worker, and then our twenty-ninth patrol officer, and then the impact to the tax levy for that portion of the project for a median value home is about four dollars and fifty cents per month, so between those two, it's a total of about nine dollars and fifty cents a month for both the base levy and then the staffing study. And then the last part that we talked about is our building improvement plan, and specifically our public safety, our police and fire has the highest needs, and the one that we're focusing on first in that program, behind that is our municipal service building, which is about half the size of what it should be now, that would be a second phase of the program, new library, which would be the third phase of the program, and then city hall would be the last phase that we'd look at, all of these buildings are either thirty years old or greater in age, and have had very little reinvestment put into them over that time, and so really are in need of, of those improvements. We have, just like the staffing analysis, broke that into a four-year period to implement that, basically it adds about eight dollars per month each of the years of the, of implementing the, the program for a total of thirty dot, four dollars per month by twenty twenty-six, but for this year would add an additional eight dollars to the total, bringing the total impact of our proposed tax levy to seventeen dollars and fifty cents per month for a median value home in the community, which again, is three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So with that being said, the, I did put in the staff report basically the total budget, which in two thousand twenty-three would be twenty-four million six hundred and thirty-five thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars, which is an increase of thirteen point four percent, the majority of that again coming though through the building improvement program, which is one point one two five million dollars of that total increase. Looking at the comparison of other communities, we would still, we don't know exactly what other cities are going to do, but assuming that other cities are doing about a five percent increase, which is, seems like it's pretty typical, typical across the board, we'd still be in the lowest quarter of cities in the metro area for tax levy per capita for twenty twenty-three. So that's the general fund component, is there any questions before I move on to enterprise funds? Okay, the community center, community center, probably the biggest thing we discussed there is that we're still in the process of rebounding from COVID, you know, the sort of two big things that hit the community center all at once is both the impacts of COVID, where we lost about forty-five percent of our memberships at its peak, but it built that back up, now we're at about twenty-eight percent lower than where we were in two thousand twenty, when the pandemic hit, we were just able to open our gym facility, which was really sort of the major sort of last part of it, of opening up the facility, which we think can start to add more programming, that will bring people, more people back to the facility, so we do think that this will be sort of the last year of sort of getting things back to normal. The other thing we talked about during that budget is just the age of the facility, so obviously we're going through the community center master plan process right now, there's some things that we just have to take care of, there's a list of four improvement projects that we have, that we need to take care of this year, dealing with HVAC units, and then we also have a Zamboni machine that's in need of replacement, the good thing with the Zamboni machine is that it's about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, but about a hundred thousand dollars of that we can actually get through our rebate program, through the electric utility, and then it'll actually be an electric powered Zamboni machine, which also then helps with emissions within the, the facility itself.
Is there any value in those when trade-in?
Uh, typically there's some value, yep, so we can, we can sell those on the, typically we sell those through auction.
They don't, they don't trade them in or buy them back, the company we buy from?
No, they're, they're old enough where you can't do that, but you can sell them.
All those backyard hockey rinks, someone's looking for a Zamboni. All those backyard hockey rinks this winter, someone's looking for a Zamboni.
Wow.
Well, you have a pretty good rink then.
Yeah, no kidding, the, the budget is, for revenues is about four point seven million, the expenditures are about four point eight million dollars, so we are, we are a little less than a hundred thousand dollars difference there, but much of that is coming because of improvements that we just can't avoid this year to do, so, obviously the goal is to get the, the facility back to normal, it's really sort of our last facility to, to deal with that from a COVID perspective.
Do you think we can get back to where we were? Is it, is it still?
I, I think now that the gym's open with, you know, if you look at the, yeah, I mean, I think we can, I think one of the things that's going to be really important for us to focus on is, is now, you know, coming up with a full plan with a master plan of how to reinvest back into the facility, because I do think it's getting to a point where, you know, people are going to be just as concerned about the quality of the facility as they, you know, as they are anything else, and so, so I do think that's something we're going to have to focus on, but I do think having the gym back and some of the programs there, I think we can get pretty close to where we were back in two thousand twenty. Town course was sort of the opposite, town course actually benefited, as most golf courses did during COVID, we actually saw a significant increase in play out there, going to close to forty thousand rounds over the last three years, probably the biggest thing with the town course, from a revenue perspective, is the, the, the policy that we set for re-establishing where resident rate should go, and the discount, and not just, you know, when we started looking at this, we were, had about a thirty-eight percent discount for our resident rates, which is great, but with fifty percent of our rounds now coming from resident rates, it's just not sustainable, so looking at, how do we create a sustainable, a decent discount for people, but also something that's sustainable? So the target has been is that we have twenty-five percent discount for residents when it's a weekday, and then a twenty percent discount when it's weekend, and most of our resident patrons are part of leagues and things like that, they're during the weekdays, and so it's really meant to, to help those people that are, or provide benefit to those people who are utilizing it the most during the week who are, are residents, so, we think we'll be completed based on sort of how we're approaching the rates, we think we'll be there in about twenty twenty-eight, so it's not like we're taking this all in one big chunk, we're sort of taking it a little piece of the time to get up, but with our proposed rates for two thousand twenty-three, the average of top-end courses, which we compare to is ninety-six dollars and seventy-one cents, our proposed rates for, for residents would be fifty-one dollars, and our proposed rates for non-residents are seventy-four dollars, still, so still significantly below what that top-end market would be, when you compare it to average courses in the area, the average weekday is fifty-three dollars and seventy cents, our residents would be paying fifty-one dollars, so they're actually paying less than what they would if they went to Bluff Creek, Dahl Green, courses that are fine, but they're just not as a high caliber as the, the town course, so, we still think we're able to meet that, that goal of really providing our residents with a good discount, but still stay sustainable. As far as the improvements that we really need to look at for this next year, we have our normal equipment replacement that's on a schedule that we need to address, but the other big things is finishing up our cart path replacement, and that's something that, we just got our, our survey comments back for this last year, and generally they're great, but there are comments on our cart paths, especially on the front nine, they're pretty bad shape.
They're bad.
So the plan is, is to get those all resurfaced between one and ten, we've already taken care of the whole back half of the course, so that would be taken care of for two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and, or I'm sorry, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then we are in need of replacing our clubhouse roof, which would be about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, we do, we are not recommending increasing our rates for carts next year, even though we're ordering our carts next year, we can't take possession of them till two thousand twenty-four, because there's that much of a backlog in the supply chain for carts, and so, we're, even though this year would typically be the year that we would typically move on our cart rate, we're actually suggesting that we wait until we actually take stock of the new cart, so that people actually see the rate increase associated with new carts, a new cart fleet coming in, and just something new to, to use.
Because of all the things, that's the thing we're probably on the high end of now, carts.
Yes. Yep.
Is, um, not to throw you off path, but, the roof at the clubhouse, did we look, was there damage in any way, that there could be insurance money, I mean, I'm assuming we did that, tried that, no luck?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's just normal wear and tear, I mean, nineteen ninety-seven is when it opened up, so it's, it's well-placed. I mean, nineteen ninety-seven is when it opened up, so it's, it's well past, past its twenty-year life. And it's a, you know, right now, it's more the cedar shake type roof that's on there. The product that we're going to use, I think, is going to be a lot more durable, but it'll still have that look. I don't want to call it plastic, but it's, it's something more durable than, long-term than the cedar shakes are on there now, but a lot of
Are shakes on there? I didn't realize that.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Are they composite shakes?
Yeah, that's probably a better term than plastic.
Like composite decky.
Like composite decky.
Composite shakes.
I don't know. It's feels plasticky to me.
There's a portion of it is, I'm sure.
So those, and, and obviously, we have the USA amateur coming in, in two thousand and twenty-four, so, I mean, the, the roof on the clubhouse is just a maintenance thing that's needed, but the, the carth pass, we really need to get those done before that takes place, so.
In the comments, people notice that the backside was done?
Yeah, I mean, the places where it's done, but they sort of forget about that when they drive in the front. I'll get you over, get you guys over a copy of the comments. I just got them a few days ago, but it's, they were really, really good comments across the board, both staff and then the quality of the course too, so. Utility funds, so I'll probably just tell you just sort of the, the general, the general gist of the utility funds is that we do a cost of service study that basically sort of indicates about where do we need to be as we go into the future from a improvement perspective to keep ourselves in a good position, because obviously, our utilities, the most important thing is reliability, but, but just about as important as the cost. And so we want to be competitive, but we also want to make sure that we're reliable. So the cost of service study looks at both, what do we need to do to have the right amount of reserves, what are the types of improvements we need to make and when? But then also pays attention to equity on how the rates are structured, so that we make sure, and that's particularly been important in like water utility, that, you know, for a while, when we did sort of a tiered rate structure, we had zero to seven thousand gallons of water used a month as being sort of the low tier. Well, seventy-two percent of our residents use seven thousand gallons of, or use seven thousand gallons or less, or seven, yeah, seven thousand gallons or less a month, which means that that's not really the median anymore. The efficiency equipment that's been put in, so low-flow heads and, you know, smart meters for irrigation and things like that have really decreased our usage. So if we really want to reward the people that, who are really trying to conserve water, we need to have that tier structure lower. So we moved that a couple of years ago down to four thousand gallons, which is sort of the average for the, for a average home, as being sort of the lowest tier, and then it went up from there. But we want to do that with all of our utilities, is to make sure that not only are the rates set right, but they're also equitably set. And also, you know, a big thing that's come out of the cost of service studies that we most recently did is that our service fees, some utilities didn't have a service fee to pay for the fixed costs, some weren't set right. And so the, the service fees are really to pay for those things that are an expense, whether or not somebody utilizes the system or not. So, you know, the expense of having somebody to a utility billing department, or having vehicles, or a building, or those types of things, the variable cost is the actual water and the water treatment and the sewer usage and stuff like that. So the rate should really reflect the variable costs, the service charge should really reflect the fixed costs. And so we've really done a lot to, to address that. The bottom line for our utility funds, looking at them together, is our electric fund, I will say our electric, when you guys first looked at this at the beginning of November, we had anticipated an increase of about eight percent on our electric fee. You'll actually notice that the percent increase that we're recommending here is actually two point six, or it's three point eight two percent increase, which has an impact of two point six nine percent on our typical residential user. So that actually decreases the cost, you know, right now, the, the average, before the, the average increase for electric user, for the average bill, was going to be closer to like that eight to nine dollars increase per month, and now it's going to be three dollars and thirty cents per month is the increase. The reason being for that is that between when we actually had the discussion and we actually have our board meeting tomorrow for MMPA, MMPA was able to go out and actually purchase ahead, they call them recs, for natural gas purchases that locked us in for the next year into a much lower rate than what we were anticipating. So having that action take place, plus just in general, you know, the, the, the costs of those types of input costs have gone down in general pretty quickly over the last two months, which has been a good thing. And we just brought on a wind generating facility down in Beaver Creek, Minnesota, which is right by Sioux Falls, which now brings our renewable sources up to about forty-one percent of our generation is coming from renewables. Well, the renewables have no input, input costs, because it's, it's wind. So the combination of all those things happening was able to decrease the amount that we had to, to pass on as, as an increase. So that's one part that's changed pretty significantly since you guys saw it for the better. Water, same as what we talked about, the increase to the average user would be about a buck ninety-six per month. Sewer, sewer is probably the biggest one that we had an impact on, because we saw about a twenty-two percent increase from Met Council for the actual sewage treatment costs. This is something that's based on our actual usage of the system as a whole. And so the growing, growing suburban communities definitely get a bigger share of that, because we're increasing the most and the fastest.
But when, when we're increasing like that because of more housing, wouldn't that new housing offset this?
To a certain extent, but we talked
It's always the question that gets asked, and I
Yeah.
Just to have you explain it again, you know?
Well, the other sort of kicker in this, and we talked a little bit about it at the, at the work session we had, is that the dry summers that we've had have actually been a detriment to communities like ours that are growing and have done things to our inflow and infiltration program, because these other cities that maybe haven't done as much, haven't contributed as much clean water to the system as they were during a wet year. And so some places saw a decrease of usage, not because they had fewer houses, but because they had less INI coming into the system than before. For us, INI hasn't been as big of an issue, because we've invested a lot into it. So we have less INI coming in from cities that were contributing it before, and we saw a growth in our houses.
So you're saying we shouldn't invest in the INI?
Well, I would have been, it would have been worse if we
Right.
You know, because we still would have had our INI. The, the biggest difference here is that there was a, for, you know, a community, I think the communities that probably have the most problems are the ones that are seeing the least amount of growth, so they could actually see a decrease in their sewer usage because of a, a dry summer, because they're not growing and there's less clean water going into the system. So unfortunately, it's one of those costs that we have absolutely no control over. It's, we know exactly what those costs will be at the beginning of the summer. They can show us exactly how they came up with the number, and we just have to live with it. So the impact to the, the average user is five dollars and thirty-eight cents a month. So it definitely has the biggest impact out of all the, the utility charges that we have, but is the one that we have the least amount of control over. And then stormwater, that is one that, you know, a few years ago, we got that up to sort of the comparable cities that we wanted to, to compare ourselves to, which were really sort of river bluff cities, or cities that have, you know, things like, like Minnehaha Creek, or Lake Minnetaka, Minnesota River, Mississippi River, those places that have more similar circumstances to us. We actually, for our proposed rate for two thousand and twenty-three at eleven seventy-seven, the average rate for two thousand and twenty-two was twelve dollars and three cents per month, so even with our proposed increase, we'd be less than what the average would be of the, the other cities out there. So the total impact for all of our utilities would be eleven dollars and forty-three cents per month, which would be a six point four seven percent increase in all of our utility bills together. Any questions on our utilities? All right, and then the last one is our, pull this up here, curling and event center. And one of the things we talked about, which has been great over the last year, is we've really seen the, the curling and event center rebound from, from COVID. We actually had things like our, our restaurant is up to the levels where it was prior to the pandemic. The event center is actually higher than it was prior to, to the pandemic. We've seen greater usage there. For the most part, the memberships are almost the same as what we saw prior to the pandemic, and the leagues have been pretty consistent. Now, the leagues and the membership didn't drop a whole lot during COVID, and one of the reasons was is because we were able to sort of keep things going. We saw a little bit of a decrease, because some people didn't want to have to play with masks and stuff like that, but for the most part, we were able to hold that pretty steady. The two areas that we saw the greatest impact was on the restaurant and then on the event center, and both of those have, have come back very strong. So the, the curling center and event center is actually in really good shape for this upcoming year. You know, one of the things we talked about in this that we'll have to continue to talk about is the reinvestment back into capital expenditures, and we do have a work session at the end of January to talk, sort of a continuation of discussion of naming rights as a potential opportunity for looking at those capital, short-term capital improvements.
So those corporate events, is it, do people come back year to year? I mean, as a, just a team building type thing, so there's a lot to come back?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know if it's always new, or?
A lot of it's new. There's a lot of corporations in the southwest metro, and so you'll see, you'll see some, you might see every other year, like a company come back, but it's just, it's one of those, it's one of those types of things that just is really popular with, especially in the month of December. Really popular for, you know, for the group to come down and have lunch, go out and curl, and just have a fun afternoon in the holidays.
Kind of unique experience.
Yeah, and so you, it's something that, it's, it's, we take care of pretty much everything for them, so all they have to do is really show up and have fun.
Is it, do we actually make money on that, or we just break even?
Oh, no, we make money on that. Yeah, we, let's, what did I say? I think we have about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, and we definitely do not have, yeah, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have pretty minimal expenses for that, because we, they're responsible for the food on their own, and the only expense we have is for the part-time instructor that comes and teaches.
Yeah, so, different conversation for another time, but, you know, there might be some other opportunities for revenue generating, things like the cricket pitches and things like that, that are kind of unique experiences that not every community has, so something to throw
No, it's, it's interesting you mention that, because we were over in Madison a couple weekends ago, and it's actually not Ma- Madison, it's the, now the city is slipping my mind, but it's where Madison Curling Club is. They actually have a park there that they have, they have curling, they have bocce ball, pickleball, and horseshoes. And it's sort of all sort of similar type of activities, and somebody told me that in the summer, they do exactly that, that they have lots of tournaments and stuff like that. So I do think that there are opportunities like that that exist, probably even at the community center too.
Yep.
So like I said, the utility rates are something that we set as part of the next action item in the agenda. Under this action item, it would be adopting the general fund and interfi- fund budgets, plus establishing the operational tax levy for two thousand and twenty-three, which we showed at fifteen million two hundred and sixteen dollars, fifteen million two hundred and sixteen thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars. That includes the general fund, Mount Pleasant Cemetery, the EDA, our tax abatement levy, and our equipment acquisition fund. Now, we do have to take a separate action item in the EDA to actually establish that, because it's a separate group, but this, this levy and what we actually do the comparison for, for impact people actually includes all those levies together. So with that being said, I certainly can answer any questions.
Questions for Matt?
And I say it every, every time at budget time, this is not any different, that we've seen this, we've talked about it, we've probably talked about more budget this year than we ever have, probably starting in April already.
Yeah, it was back in March, April.
That we started talking about what we're doing with buildings and, and how we go about it. So the fact that we don't have questions doesn't mean that we haven't had questions. We've had tons of questions that we've had through work sessions and other sessions on regarding the budget, so.
And the truth and taxation hearing.
And the truth and taxation hearing. We had, we had a good turnout for truth and taxation, which generally, in the past, we have not had. So, and, and we as council and staff did a ton of it through the events this year, and block parties in each ward, and about anywhere possible that we could. And we talked about, you know, the, the building program for sure, and just the overall budget, so levy. So we're not taking this lightly, the fact, again, that we're not having any questions. It's just we don't have any new questions, I don't think. Truth and taxation was, we spent a lot of time, we talked a lot as council here about how we feel about the direction we're going and stuff like that. And I will say, in all the years that I've sat here, this has made me, this is probably one of the tougher budget things that, because I, I know that it's, it's going up a lot, and we've said that, and part of me says we shouldn't, but I know deep down, we were elected to make the hard decisions, and this is a hard decision, but I, but I, I truly believe it's the right decision. Our buildings need, need improvements, are new, however you want to look at it, and we've talked about it, talked about it, and we've just, it's, it's time to do something. And we've had these conversations, we've got, we've really set ourselves up in a, in a good situation here, is that clearly, our police and fire, our public safety is in the, in the most dire need, that if something really went bad, we can, we can get that process done. We can, we could delay the next, in all likelihood, it's going to cost more and more as we have, but we have that ability to do that. Our city is still growing. I've talked about it in a couple of articles, you know, we have five or six housing developments that are in process. We have three apartment buildings being built. We have four or five commercial projects that are going. We have a potential of a large data center. We have Costco. I mean, we just have, if you're going to do something like that, is to do it in the times that we are actively growing and have this kind of activity, that, that hopefully, as we move forward, those numbers can lower, but we can't state that now. We can't speculate that those numbers will go down, so we have to give the numbers that we know what we have to do over the next four years, so. It's, like I said, I've, I've thought and gone over this budget more than I have in any of the other previous budgets, but I, as, as challenging as it is and as hard as it is, I, I think it's, I think it's the right thing, it's the right time. And once this is done, our city facilities should be good going into the future of Chaska for many, 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 many years.
Well, and it, you know, create a revenue source when they need, because they will need to get redone
Yeah, I mean, we're, that's where we're at.
Twenty-five years from now, that we'll be able to Twenty-five years from now, that we'll be able to reinvest back into those again.
Yeah, I, you know, I forgot about that. That's the, that's the, that's the tool we didn't have now, is we didn't have a system in place that we can start doing repairs. We were good about building, but not necessarily setting ourselves up for today, where we are today, that we've, we're all in this situation today, is, is we have to make that decision, so. Anyways, I usually don't speak first, but I did, sorry. So with that, questions, comments regarding the budget?
I think you kind of just said everything I was thinking. I got an email as recent as this weekend, just saying that it will impact them. They're on a fixed income, and, and I think that's the hardest part, is that, like, I live on one income, and it's certainly not fixed, so I can't completely understand, but it, I understand when you have that weight of all sorts of bills, and then there's another one that's just going up and up. So those are the kinds of things, I think you said, well, like, this was not easy, it was not taken lightly, and it certainly was very thought out, and I do commend the staff. I think they did a really good job at trying to be creative, and even probably in ways that residents and even us maybe don't realize in, like, with the facilities, and how impactful moving this police department up to land we already have, and how much money that saves. Like, those are all sorts of little things that I know the staff worked really hard to do, to keep it as low as you can possibly. And, and those are the things that I'm really grateful staff was able to do, but I realize it's hard, and that it's, I wish we would have done this years ago, but where, where we're at, and I remember when I first came on the council and touring, and Councilmember Hubbard's measure- mentioned this, too, touring and, like, shimmying through the Public Works Building, and just seeing how cramped everything was. And, and I grew up the child of a city employee, so I, I even saw it as a child, and was still so surprised when I was adult walking through, I mean, like, holy crud, this is really cramped. So it's the right thing to do. It's not a really popular thing for everyone, but it's the right thing, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll echo the same thoughts as the mayor and councilmember Hatfield, and I'll, I'll just add that, you know, one of the things I touched on in an email was, you know, there were, there are added costs that are hard to quantify with where we're at currently, just with, you know, loss of productivity, like, we talked about it at the truth in taxation meeting, possible recruitment that's not happening, just with the current state of our facilities, and, and other costs that are harder to quantify, but still have negative effects towards our city services and the, and the continuity of those services. So I think that, you know, this is really is a difficult decision. I think we all, I mean, I can't speak for everybody up here, but I, I'd like to think that we all feel that, that it is hard to ask people to pay more, but it, the, we are at that time of, that critical time right now, that we, we have to do this and, and face this challenge head-on, so.
So, you know, I'm absolutely loathe to raise taxes and to impact those, especially in the lower incomes who will be, you know, more perhaps disproportionately affected by this. But not doing it for a community is an absolute, you know, the, the fact that we have to do this is an absolute necessity, because if we don't do that, it impacts not just the quality of service that we'll receive as residents, but it impacts the people that work for the city, ability to recruit people that work for the city, and impacts people all across this community. And so that's really, really important, that it was a, it was a incredibly challenging to say, yeah, this is something we absolutely have to do. But one of the things I do want to acknowledge is that, as much of this is a significant investment this is, this investment is built on the backs of all the leaders that came before us, too, because there's a lot of decisions, there were very good decisions that got us to the point where we can reuse a lot of facilities, so we're not building and spending a lot more than we are now. So for, you know, it's, you know, like, you know, good decisions, like, for example, the municipal services building has enough land and has enough space that we can actually use that, which saves a tremendous amount of real estate acquisition costs, where we can actually use the existing facility and build onto that. The fact that, and the big plan will be able to use, you know, City Hall and reuse City Hall and continue to use it, and just expand upon it, and will be also expanding upon the existing public safety building. So, you know, the, the work that's went into this, of a lot of the good decisions that, that our predecessors have led it, led the city into, resulted in a lot of things, like, you know, whether it's the levy that, you know, protects us from the river, the trails and the parks, the green space, the community center, Fireman's Park, their industrial park, our municipal electric that, you know, helps us to mitigate some of our taxes. Highway two twelve, you'll be in Chaska Commons and Target that are here, were results of some really, really good decisions that were made, that some of them were harder than others. But, you know, I'd like to think that thirty years from now, another council will be here and look back and hopefully say, yep, glad they did this, because then we'll have the facilities that will carry us continuing on to the future. So, you know, strategically, I'm looking at this as, this is an investment in our community, our people, our people collectively, all, and I mean our people, everyone who lives here, everyone who works here, an entire community, that's an investment in all of us.
One last, I don't know what else to say. Um, no, I, I echo, right? I guess the one thing I, that hasn't been said, that I, I also tie back to this, that we actually haven't talked about much, was when we started this journey, we talked about looking at the survey of the, of the city residents. And if, had a, you know, there was a question about, you know, if you had to raise taxes, where would you support it, right? And the conversation right there wasn't a data that said, you know, investing in existing facilities and upgrading those facilities, please, and those types of things. And, and that sticks with me, right? And I appreciate it, you know, Mayor, you talked about a little bit more of an active truth in taxation meeting, and we've had at least the four years that I've been up here. I, again, want to thank those individuals. I also say that for all the individuals that were here, and, and most of them were concerned about that, we heard you, I've also heard a lot of people through all the events that we've been to, understand it, and they're, and actually excited about it, you know. No one would say they're excited about paying more in taxes, I get that, but they see that it's, it's going for things that are basic needs of a city, public safety, public spaces for City Hall, a library system, you know, things that matter to people. And so to me, it goes way back into that April timeframe, when we looked at the, the data from the survey that talked about, okay, you know what, I understand, I support, as a general public, investing in those types of things if it, if it means I have to raise my taxes. So I just add that, because I, we've, we've talked a lot, as we've alluded to, about all these topics and thought about it, but that's one that, we kind of started that conversation out with, about looking at, okay, if we do this, where is the public support? And, and those surveys kind of demonstrated that there's good public support behind, you know, projects like this.
The one interesting thing about that last survey we did is that not only talked about reinvesting back into those existing ones, but it also, we specifically asked about the library. And the library, which I've actually found really interesting through this whole process, is, I mean, it is the one thing that we have to go and get additional land and, you know, and do it with, but, I mean, one of the things that I think all of us sort of heard through a lot of those meetings that we went to is, don't forget the library. So that, that, that was one that, I, I don't know why I would have thought this, but I would have thought that maybe people would have thought that, you know, maybe that's something you can wait on, but that was one, they're like, yeah, we get why you need to do this, but don't forget the library. And the survey results that we got back in the last survey played that out, too, that people felt that the library was a real important component.
That's a, I mean, that's a community asset, so, really important.
You know, I, I just want to put a little history out on this, you know, the two thousand eight recession really, really hit here pretty hard as well. We talked about it, I, I got on council during that process, and, you know, we, through budget and whatever, we talked about how it would take us five years to get back to where we were when we started, but it was more like seven years. Took us seven years to get where we were back in two thousand eight, by the time we got back to, to an equal.
From a valuation perspective.
Yeah, so, so we lost all that time to be able to buil- build facilities. Then we, then we flipped over the other way, we were building so fast, we couldn't hardly keep up with anything, and then, then a pandemic hits, because I, I think if it wasn't, if we didn't have the pandemic, in all likelihood, the public safety building would have been built. I mean, I, I really, I, I do believe that. I mean, we were already, had been working with the fire chief at the time about, about what, what needs to be done there. It was real obvious what needed to be done in the police department, but it was just, I, you know, then again, I think, when we really looked at our facilities during COVID, is when we really decided that, you know, putting them together there is maybe they're out to go. And so, you know, even though it seems like we maybe waited a long time, we did have some obstacles in front of us that made it very, very challenging to be able to do some of this, but I, like I said, I, I just, even though there's a little, there's obvious uncertainty in, in our economy and where things are, I think our economy here locally in Chaska is still very strong, and that, that makes this decision much easier to make, that we have to do tonight, so. Anyone else? So, at this point, then, we need to make a motion, and basically, basically, we'd be adopting Resolution twenty-two-two dash one forty-seven, which is the twenty-twenty-three tax levy in general and enterprise fund budgets, on this particular motion.
So moved?
So I have a motion by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Gra. Again, that's twenty-two-two dash one forty-seven, twenty-two-three tax levy, general enterprise fund budgets. Discussion. Hearing that, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries.
Right. One thing I will just mention really quickly is, obviously, with resources put in place for this, we want to try to use them as quickly as possible, because if people are putting them out there, we want to be able to be efficiently using those. So we are going to be back right away in January with the architect recommendation.
They come in tomorrow, right?
Uh, so tomorrow's the last day for, for proposals for that, so we, we want to just make sure that we're being efficient in, in using the, these dollars. And so we're gonna start this right away in January and make sure that we keep on track.
I think we've been pretty good about saying that. We've had a timeline that, you know, that, one, that we were already putting together, an architect, didn't cost us anything if the budget didn't go, but we were gonna get that place immediately, and then, that, with the hope of, of building in twenty-four.
Yep, so that the goal will still be the spring of twenty-twenty-four is when we would be aiming to, to start construction on that, so.
Okay. All right, we move to eight C, which is establish the twenty-twenty-three utility rates.
So, Mayor, Councilmember, first of all, you can, you can not pay attention to how it has to get divided into different sections, the agenda, it makes it look like it's, like, different items, but that's just the way our agenda system works now. This is all one item with, with multiple resolutions here, but basically, the item in front of you tonight is basically to establish the rates that were utilized to develop the budget for each of our enterprise funds for our utilities. So it'd be water, sewer, electric, and stormwater. So you can see on the staff report, just like we showed in the budget report, that the total impact for the bills on an average user in the community would be eleven dollars and forty-three cents per month, or a six point four seven percent increase. The two point six nine percent of that increase is, or there's a two point six nine percent impact increase on electric, eleven point seven eight percent on water, twenty point four five percent on sewer, and again, that's majorly, mainly because of the Met Council charges, and then the, the stormwater is seven point one nine percent. A couple of things I will point out with that, we still are very competitive with each of our utility rates. If you look at the city water comparison, us and Chan-Hassan really are sort of the two lowest in the area for both, both our tiers of water, the higher tier for irrigation and for the wintertime usage. Our sewer rates tend to be pretty similar, because we have the, the same treatment facility, but you can see with the sewer rate comparison that we're right, right about the same as Chan, which is probably the most comparable city to us. Some states are still converting over to the Met Council system, and so they still have some of those initial expenses they had to do to do that, but make it a little bit more expensive. But I, I think you'll see over time, as the cities to the west of us develop, you'll see that most of those rates end up being about the same. From stormwater perspective, I mentioned this before, that our new rate that we're recommending is eleven dollars and seventy-seven cents, which is below the two thousand twenty-two average of twelve dollars and three cents, so we expect that we're gonna stay competitive there. And then our electric rates are, for two thousand twenty-two, were five percent lower than Excel, and Excel continues to implement their, their last, or their, their first rate increase that they put in place, which was twenty-one percent over a three-year period. You probably saw in the news maybe about a week and a half ago that they withdrew. They actually had two rate increases that they had made. They had made one that was back about a year ago, they put a second one in after that. It's the most recent one that they withdrew. The last one is still going through the process of getting implemented, but we fully expect, Excel has some major expenses that they're gonna have in the future, that they're gonna need to come back for rate increases, so we expect that we're gonna stay competitive there as well.
Why'd they remove the one?
Because they got a lot of opposition to it. Well, and primarily, they got a lot of opposition because they were still implementing their last rate increase.
As I was gonna say, yeah.
Yeah, but that gives you an indication about where they're needing to be, that they were willing to try to go forward with a rate increase, even when they had one that was pending. So they, they have a lot of older infrastructure that they need to reinvest back into, and they have a higher renewable requirement than we do. Even though their requirement's thirty percent, and I mentioned to you before, with our new wind farm, we're at forty percent for our renewables, so we've actually exceeded even what Excel's requirements are from the state. So we do have, and, and you should do these individually, we have.
I got them here.
Okay, you should do each one individually.
Yep.
Certainly, I wanted to answer any questions.
Again, you kind of heard it, you know, in, in the levy discussion, and we've gone through these rates, and, and a lot of it is, is really the cost of service studies that we've done is what we're following on, almost all of them, right?
Yeah, except for sewer.
Yeah, well, and we've already talked about that, but we really don't have a lot of control on sewer at all, so. That's established by the Met Council, so. So we have, we'd have electric to do summary publication, what would that motion adopt? Two-one forty-nine and ten twenty-eight.
No, is that the summary that we have to publish in the paper?
Yes, the ordinance for, for like, the electric ordinance is very detailed, with a lot of redline edits, it's very long. We have the option, instead of publishing the entire ordinance that we're required to do, to publish a resolution if council authorizes publishing the summary resolution that says, we're changing the rates, the details available at City Hall.
So do we have to split that one, that has Resolution twenty, twenty?
You first take action to adopt the ordinance, and then you take action to adopt a resolution, which will allow you to publish just the summary of the ordinance.
So there's really, in looking at the bottom of the staff report, there's really one, two, three, four, five different items we have to individually do.
Right.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay.
All right, well, let's just, let's just go ahead, if, first off, any other questions? I kind of not giving anybody an opportunity to speak here. All right, so our, I'm gonna follow the list here, and our first one that I have is a, a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-two-two dash ten twenty-eight, establishing the twenty-twenty-three electric utility rates.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield. Again, adopt- Second by Councilmember Hatfield. Uh, again, adopting ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-eight, establishing the twenty twenty-three electric utility rates. Discussion.
Sorry, that was twenty twenty-two dash ten twenty-eight, right?
Is that what I said?
Yeah. It's in twenty twenty-eight.
Oh. Ten twenty-eight, you are correct. Thank you. All right. Uh, discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. The next one is adopting, motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash one forty-nine. Is that it then? Then the other ones approving the summary publication?
It's approving the summary.
This is just for the electric. This is publishing.
Approving the publication of the twenty twenty-two dash ten twenty-eight.
Yeah, the summary of that.
The ordinance you just approved. Now we're going to adopt a resolution to publish a summary of that instead of the entire ordinance.
Exactly what he said. Discussion.
So moved.
Uh, motion by Councilmember, uh, Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Gra. Again, uh, motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash one forty-nine, approving the summary publication of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash one zero two eight. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Carries. Now we move to, uh, motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash ten twenty-seven, establishing the twenty twenty-three water and sewer utility rates.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Gra, second by Councilmember Wong. Again, adopting ordinance twenty twenty-two dash ten twenty-seven, establishing twenty twenty-three water and sewer utility rates. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Now, we have to ma-, uh, motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash one fifty, approving summary publication of the ordinance we just approved, which is twenty twenty-two dash ten twenty-seven. Discussion. Motion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember, uh, Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. This is the last one. Motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash one five one, establishing the twenty twenty-three stormwater utility rates. Discussion. Motion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember, uh, Hatfield.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Gra. Again, this is, uh, resolution twenty twenty-two dash one fifty-one, twenty twenty-three stormwater utility rates. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. All right. That's it. Right?
Yep. Has a lot of numbers.
A lot of numbers. Probably made one mistake. I thought it was pretty good. At least that I know.
Well done.
That I got. All right. Uh, brings us to, uh, bills.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Um, so page five, under Carver County, there's, um, something that says TNT billing for ninety-nine hundred.
Yep. That's our truth and taxation statements. We have to pay for them if they get sent out.
I just hadn't seen it in, like, it's TNT.
TNT, yeah.
That's so like, oh, okay. That's what it is. Um, and then page seven, uh, under computer, computer integration technologies, what is the dark trace agreement? Because it sounds very ominous.
Yeah. It's an artificial intelligence cybersecurity device that monitors our network for abnormal behavior that would shut down the network port when it suspects malicious behavior.
Did you just read that, Matt?
Yes. Because I didn't want to screw that one up.
Boy, I saw it read that. He didn't pull that one. Bad rabbit out of that.
On top of your head, right?
Yeah, I just had that one on the top of my head. No, that, it's, it's, it's basically, it, it shuts down ports if we detect that there's any malicious stuff.
So it's basically like an AI firewall, basically. Yeah, that's pretty cool. Okay. It's, it sounds pretty cool, but yeah, okay.
What's the name of it?
Dark Trace.
Trace.
Dark Trace.
Yeah. Does it breathe heavy? Um, okay. So then page twenty-six, um, there's an item that Stuart Erby, we, you know, the vendor we use all the time, but it's for a switch cab PME. Um, like, it's a nine hundred amp something. But what was that for? Because it's
It's a switch cabinet for the Costco project.
Oh, gotcha.
Yep. So it's our electric service switch cabinet for up there.
Because I don't see we buy a lot of those. That's why it kind of jumped out at me.
Yeah, we, we do. I mean, every major development that we have, we have to buy a new one for.
Okay. That's because there's like one in front of like the, in front of Chaska Commons, went over by the, right in the, of course, it's right in front of the sign for, um, Hazelton Commons, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hopefully, we're not going to put it like right in front of like the monument sign, are we, or is it?
I don't think so. I don't, I haven't seen where it is.
Because that's like the one in front of Hazelton Commons is like the worst possible place, by the way. Yeah.
That actually might be the signal box.
It's a signal box?
Yeah, I think.
Oh, so that's what it is.
No, I think that's the signal box.
Right, right on the corner of forty-one and?
Yeah.
I'll bet it's a signal box.
That's a signal box. We don't have a whole lot of say over that because that's Middletown right away.
Because I always thought it's like, it's really dumb that, you know, here's this beautiful monument sign and then there's a box right in front of it.
Yep.
Yep. Okay. So that's all I've got.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Motion to pay the bills.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hubbard to pay the bills. Discussion. Elise.
Councilmember Hatfield.
Yes.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Yes.
Councilmember Wong.
Aye.
Councilmember Gra.
Yes.
Mayor Winchell.
Yes. We'll start with, uh, we're in other business. We'll get Councilmember Hubbard done.
Yeah.
Okay, you've been waiting for this.
Well, I've waited my whole life for this. Um, yeah. So we had a, a community center task force meeting between this last council meeting and now. I feel like I always get to steal the show from Councilmember Gra on these. But, um, basically, we, it was an exciting meeting. And it was exciting because we got to see some, like, preliminary, uh, uh, or concept, concept plans, uh, potential options for the, some of the, uh, revisement to, to the inner workings of the community center and, um, some different options, you know, one using like the, you know, the existing footprint of the building and just, um, you know, kind of reformulating things in different spots. And other, uh, option had, uh, you know, possibly, uh, some areas of expansion. So just really like taking those in, um, seeing the potential benefits to either option, um, and kind of gauging the community members' uh, perspectives as far as, you know, what they, what they were leaning towards, if they, you know, liked option A or, or option B, which was the, you know, more of the expanded version of it. And at this point, um, we were, you know, just going to review them, take them home and, and kind of, um, move forward from there as far as, they're, they're going to bring back more of a, um, more, more financial data behind, you know, what, what it would cost for this, what it would cost for that. Um, because I think that was really weighing heavy on a lot of the minds of our community members as well as us. So, um, but that, so it was very, it was a really a cool, cool, um, meeting in that regard, um, to kind of look over and, and see those. Uh, I helped out also with, uh, the Chaska PD with Officer Julie's Heroes and Helpers. Um, got to wrap gifts and do a little bit of help shopping, uh, for some of the, um, uh, people that, uh, some of the kids that came through. So it was really, it's always just a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful experience. Um, it's my favorite thing. I look forward to it all year. Uh, and it's just, um, it's just an awesome experience. That's, I, I don't, I don't, I kind of don't have great words to say about it other than just feeling just wonderful afterwards and just seeing that. So I really want to thank all the, uh, different, um, organizations that, you know, contribute to that. I know that there are a lot of organizations that financially contribute to that. I know that Officer Julie works with, um, community partners to kind of come up with the, um, list of, um, families in need and just thank them for participating, um, because it's wonderful to see them, um, enjoying their time walking through Target and picking out gifts for their family members. Um, also want to thank Santa for making an appearance. Um, uh, and also, um, Officer Julie for all of her hard work. So I'm sure, I'm forgetting people in all of that Target as well. There's so many people to make that happen. Um, so I want to thank them. And it's just wonderful to be a part of it. So, uh,
All the many officers that were
And all the officers that participated and walked around, um, yep, and helped shop and helped wrap. Um, so yes, so many. Uh, going back to the community center, I had an opportunity to take my son to Open Skate, uh, a couple of weekends ago. And I got to sit down where like, you know, normally like the hockey players kind of sit. And I figured that, you know, I could start my own business there because I was like tightening the laces of random people that were needing assistance with their skate rentals. Um, and there was, uh, like, there were some community members there that live in Chaska that had just, it was kind of fun because I, I got to get, do like, you know, ground research. They were, they were there to, um, open skate, but they, two, two or three of them I had spoken to had just rejoined or joined the community center for the purpose of the skating rink and for like the purpose of the using it for the birthday facilities. Um, just had great reviews over the community center. It was, it was, it was wonderful to kind of chit chat with some of the community members. So anyways, I just wanted to touch on how great, um, it is that we have, you know, Open Skate there and how popular it is, but just to see people actively using it. And our, our community members coming back and joining the community center again. So, and then, um, I'm sure someone will touch on it more. We do have some open seats coming up here. The deadline is?
Twenty-six.
The twenty-sixth? Yeah.
Yeah. And one thing we were going to mention in particular, it's the planning commission. Uh, Nate doesn't have any applicants right now.
Yeah, I believe there's one person who submitted for both park, for parks and recor planning.
Yeah. But that's the one that we actually
Yeah, we've got three openings there.
Three openings.
Well, when, when we say openings, does that mean anybody that's reapplying? Or we actually have three positions that we have to bring someone new in for?
We actually, for the planning commission, three that we need new people for.
We actually need three people.
That are terming out.
Minimum.
Either, either resigned or have termed out. Okay. So they're actually, if we don't have anyone, we will have three that will be unfilled seats.
Correct.
Okay.
And the reason I bring this up is if you guys have people that you know, please encourage them to apply. Same for the public. If you know people who are interested, please have them apply because, um, obviously the planning commission does a lot of very important work. And so, um, it's interesting because that's the one that we've always had the least amount of trouble actually getting
Right.
uh, people to apply for in the past. Over the last couple of years, that's been the one that we've had the most challenge with. So, uh, so highly encourage people. If you're interested in the planning commission, now's a good time to consider it.
Okay.
Also, this one that was a functioning commission that we also need approvals to happen from planning commission. So it's really important that we have a quorum there.
Correct. Yeah.
And we're not at risk, I mean, to be clear, we're not at risk of not having a quorum. Um, but, you know, it's three positions and it's
Yeah, you want, yeah, full body.
And I also want to be clear, the planning commission is not the only one with openings. I think every single board or commission does have
He just seems to only focus on the things that impact him.
Yes.
I just, I signal it just to remind people the deadline and
You brought it up.
Yeah.
What's that?
He said that like you brought it up.
Yeah, he did bring it up. Although I was, I was encouraging Matt to bring it up.
He, he sent me a text encouraging me to tend to bring that up. So.
Oh, the truth comes out.
Yeah.
That's why others write Matt scripts for me. So he's on track.
What, uh, um, and, and then the other, like parks, or are we short there? I know that we had multiple openings all over the place, but are they all?
My, my understanding is that parks, um, could use a student applicant. There's two, there's two other openings, but they're folks who have reapplied. Um, the Human Rights Commission, Elise, you're probably better to speak to that one. It looks like from what I've seen, there's three regular openings in a student opening. There's currently maybe two applications.
Yeah, there's actually one opening, one regular opening and one student opening.
Okay.
Do we have somebody we can reach out to at the school?
Yeah. I just reached out to Jim Bach already and let him know.
You did?
Yeah, I already did. I can reach out to him again, just to remind him. And there's also the, the Heritage Preservation Commission. Uh, we have three openings. One is applied exclusively for that. And then it looks like there's one that applied for either the HRC or the HPC. So.
Yeah. We only have
Four openings and applicants for certain.
We only right now have two new applications.
Oh, wow.
So that's, that's why we're bringing it up is that we really could use new applications.
And when do they close?
Twenty-sixth. So.
December?
Yeah.
So we need both regular and student.
Now, if we need to ex- extend that, we will.
Yeah.
But, um,
It can be so hard right now with so much going on.
Yep. And we do have interviews slated for two meetings in January, so we can push more out onto the twenty-third too.
Well, that's, I'm glad I brought it up. That's a great discussion.
I was happy as nature.
Just two more things. Just thanking our public works crew for all the snow plowing and hard work that they've been doing. And, and, um, I know it's, just seems like it's been snowing nonstop. So.
Well, if you think it's snowed before, just wait.
I hear it's supposed to, don't, don't, just don't.
So bad.
Don't, don't go there. But no, I
If you overtalk it, it won't happen.
You know, it, I just want to thank them for all their hard work. That's a lot of
Whoever subscribed us to those weather emails, thank you and no thank you.
Yeah.
No, I got a little stressed out from that at first. And then I realized it was like, oh, this is just like a constant thing now.
Like, I appreciate it, but I also don't appreciate it. But I appreciate it.
I was like, this has to be really important if I get an email about it. Um, lastly, there, there's, um, a lot of observed and recognized holidays between now and the new year. So I just, I want to wish everybody, um, um, happy holidays, Merry Christmas. Um, I want to wish everyone, um, a Happy New Year. Um, I hope it brings joy and peace to everybody. Uh, and that's all I've got.
Thank you. Uh, how about Mr. Michael?
Thank you. Um, so let's see. Um, I also had the pleasure of attending the Heroes and Helpers event. It was the first time I have attended it. Um, loved, loved being able to participate in that event. Um, it was, for me, I think it was great to see, um, to be able to interact with people, you know, firsthand and, um, be able to, you know, see the people I'm able to help, which is something that sometimes we don't get a chance to do up here because, you know, it's one of those things, just the nature of, you know, what we do. Um, but be able to like interact with people one-on-one is just a, a great thing. And be able to help people out there is just a fantastic, uh, it's very rewarding experience. And so, um, I think it's a fantastic event. Uh, love the fact that, you know, that Julie's been able to organize this and, you know, to get the support of like so many different community organizations. So, you know, again, you know, thank you to everyone who's, uh, everyone who's been a part of that and for everyone, especially Officer Jenke, who's, you know, been kind of spearheading that effort for so many years. Um,
Well, if I can just touch on that before I forget about it.
Yeah.
What, somebody that we've kind of forgot about are, there were staff from the schools there that worked with the, the participants. So they were there to help greet them, uh, some help with lai- language barriers and things like that. So we've kind of talked a lot, but they were kind of, this is the first year that I saw so many of them there helping out. So I just wanted to add that before I forgot it as well.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I, I wasn't out on the front side. I was kind of in the back helping. So I didn't get a chance to see a lot of those folks. So, you know, certainly thank you to everyone who, of everyone, especially from the school district. And I think Lyons had a, a good turnout there as well. Um, so insert, um, a lot of cert volunteers. So great turnout. Um, so absolutely. Um, another one is that, um, also I'm look, we're looking forward to this Wednesday with Santa, you know, visiting Another one is that also I'm looking forward to this Wednesday with Santa, you know, visiting the city and, you know, taking a little tour of Chaska. You know, that, that the city has a Santa tracker, so hopefully will everyone get a chance to see Santa come by their neighborhoods and tour around. So everyone waved to Santa and the tracker's out on the City of Chaska's website. And it's, and it's a live tracker, so you can see where Santa is, as I understand. Also, update for Southwest Transit. So I, you know, a number of, I think folks may know or may or may not know that we've been looking for a new CEO for, gosh, the past year now. And so unfortunately, our search has still continues as we had a candidate who were, who have been working with for the past like, I don't know, like five, six months now, actually. And that has fallen through. So unfortunately, we're still can continue back its drawing board with our, with our search for a new CEO. But also, there's also a change in leadership is like, I'm finishing my, finishing my term at Southwest Transit as Chair. So the new Chair next year will be Jerry McDonald, who is a council member from Chanhassen. So he'll be picking up from there. And P. Jean Narayan, who's a council member from Eden Prairie, will be the Vice Chair. And Councilmember Hatfield, congratulations, is the Treasurer, so she'll be signing all the checks.
Yes, congratulations to me.
Hand signing.
Hand signing every single check. So what, some other things going on with Southwest Transit, the arboretum, Winter Light Services has been really successful, is continuing on. Will go on to December 23rd. The express ridership, that's, you know, the big buses that go to and from downtown. It's basically flattened out since September. And so what we're seeing is that, you know, even though like, you know, the, the, was it the occupancy rates in the city have gone up a little bit, they're pretty flat right now. And we're seeing that there's a peak in ridership on Tuesdays through Thursdays. So what it seems like is with the hybrid models that companies are taking, that, you know, people come in somewhere around Tuesdays and Thursdays and then Mondays and Fridays are pretty quiet for the most part. But the ridership really hasn't gone up too much in terms of express ridership to downtown. However, we seem to be setting new records every month for prime ridership, which indicates there's a strong demand and a need for transportation amongst the communities between Chaska Chan, Eden Prairie, and, you know, and Victorian Carver and stuff. So there's definitely a, a demand for, a need for people to get places. And so that service has become very popular. So that's something that we're going to have to keep and so continue supporting as well as some of their edge services, which are services that bring people to other communities like Shawk, it'd be for work or for, or down the 494 corridor to like Southdale or the Mall of America. And one of the most, one of the really popular services, especially this time of year that I think people are finding out about, is that we also have a service that goes from our area to the airport. And that's become very popular too, because I think it's, you know, effectively it's, I can't remember, it's like eight or $10 round trip, but it's like a fraction of the cost of, you know, parking there for a day or for, you know, getting a cab, for example. And also, and also thank you for bringing up the, the commissions. That's really, you know, that's a, that's a huge thing that we definitely need to make sure we continue to, you know, to fill those spots. And it's also for people who are interested in participating, it's a great way to get involved and kind of learn more about how things actually, you know, work in the city and to be able to have that voice in terms of, you know, like what, you know, in terms of, you know, what things should look like and how things kind of form as we look at our community building, whether it's in the parks or whether it's in, you know, Planning Commission and Human Rights and so forth. Finally, or actually also just, and I, I can't let it go without saying, because I'm a huge football fan, but it's unfortunate, I guess it's, it's like, wow, what a snoozer a game, Vikings game was the other day.
Yeah.
Vikings play.
Such a snooze.
Such a snoozer, only the largest comeback in NFL history, so. Yep, and overtime, so.
We all knew it was coming.
We all knew it was coming, it was just going to happen, right? It's almost inevitable.
Yeah.
So, and last but not least, just wanted to wish everyone a happy holidays and so Merry Christmas or those celebrate Christmas. Hanukkah is currently going on from January, oh, December 18th through the 26th. And there's Celebrate Kwanzaa, which is between the 26th and January 1st. Or if there's something else you celebrate, it's really happy holidays and Happy New Year to everyone.
Thank you. Michael?
I think everything I had to say was covered, so, yeah. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Kwanzaa. I got to celebrate Hanukkah one year, so I was dating a man that celebrated Hanukkah. And it was actually really lovely, so it was kind of nice. If you ever want to just explore another culture, it doesn't hurt. I celebrate Christmas, I don't think Jesus got mad that I celebrated Hanukkah one year. So branch out and learn about other cultures, it's good, other religions, doesn't hurt anyone, so, yeah. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. John?
I was just going to just echo many of the same thoughts, looking for the Santa tracker. I am piquing my curiosity in this, talking about Santa and I have a special surprise this year, how he gets around. So I just want to point that out if people didn't see that. My interest has been piqued as well, so I will be checking that out. And then lastly, just, just a shout out to both the boys and girls, basketball associations and basketball teams at the high school. Both of them in the last, I'll say month, maybe in three weeks hosted kind of the younger kids in the association to come and go to the game and got in free and all that type of thing. And, and, and it just matters, like you just see kids watch high school kids play and, and, you know, I, I remember that. I, my kids remember that, you know, they talk about, you know, they, it's a little bit of an idolization because they're, they look so much bigger. And I just think that's an awesome way of getting people involved and, you know, and, and like a lot of sports. I'm sure the other, I, my kids choose to play basketball in the fall and know a lot of the other associations and sports do similar things. And I really just think in a time where a lot of sports are declining in, in participation, things like that matter, it gets people in, it gets kids interested, it gets people, kids want talking about it and a way to contribute. So that was just fun, I just appreciate, I went to, with, with my boy, both my boys, and they just appreciate watching the games and being recognized a little bit and feel a part of something bigger than themselves, which is kind of cool, so, just thought I was still out there, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Nate?
Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year. That's all I have to say.
Elise?
Update.
Kate?
Let's go.
Don't say.
If you overtalk it, then it won't happen.
But not too much.
No, you got anything?
Just wrapping up the year, have a new year coming right around the corner.
And how we do, don't we? Start all over again, right?
Yeah, start the cycle.
Thanks, thanks to your staff for help, I'm sure you had a lot to do in preparation for putting all this numbers together and our, our staff here for doing it too, so, thank you. Nate, or Pat, whatever your name is.
After I've been insulted, after I've been insulted like that, no. No, just happy holidays, hope everybody has, has a great one.
All right, what do I have going on? What's going on down by Gedney? You know, they're down, way down back in by the river. They've been hauling out of there.
Down by the river?
Yep, because I know they had their, they had a treatment plant down there, that was part of the issue, but they're way back.
I've not noticed any snowing.
Was it, was it the van down by the river?
No. Never mind, apparently I'm not going to get an answer here.
I, I'd have to find out, I, I guess.
I mean, they got a.
I feel like I would know.
Flagman there and there's, like, there'll be three dump trucks that come out and there'll be three sitting there waiting to go down in, or Cuskey's doing it. Cuskey's doing the flagging, but they're way down, I mean, you can see them way back by the river.
I know they had like lagoons back in there, right?
Yeah, I don't know if they're abandoning those or.
Yeah, they had, they had lagoons, I don't know what the right term is, but where.
Yeah, it was their, it was their sewer system.
It was their, it was their.
It was their treatment facility.
It was their treatment facility.
Yeah.
So I'm just guessing that maybe there's something to do with that, but I, I really don't know.
Because I know that was part of the issue, they had some leakage back there, but maybe now they have to take them out.
There's a big leakage.
I don't know.
Yeah, it's in Chanhassen, but.
I, I know it's Chanhassen, but I figured. It always comes back to Chaska.
Anything else in Chanhassen you want to spell up?
Want to play that game? All right, all right. I, I just do want a Santa Parade Wednesday, going to be a little chilly, but it should be snowy as well, so.
Doesn't sound like a blizzard, that's the next day, right?
Yeah, that's the next day.
That's the next day, so.
And it's Santa Tracker, so you don't have to be out there all day.
It'll be like a Hallmark movie.
It'll be a Hallmark movie. Santa does, Santa is going to have a new chariot this year, so make sure you get out and, and wave and say hi. It's still top secret at this point.
Don't forget Buddy the Elf, my kids were pretty excited for Buddy the Elf.
It's rad.
The Grinch?
You, I will say, the Grinch will be pleasantly surprised in my neighborhood because I have a 10-foot Grinch outside, played a ball outside my house, so Grinch is well respected as well.
That's all I have as well, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, however you celebrate. I hope that you have a joyous event with families and friends and just really have a good time. And it's good that everyone can be back together again and hopefully pandemic stays quiet for a while, COVID, I should say. But, so this is our last meeting for 2022. Remember, the first Monday is the legal holiday, so we don't come in until the 9th. And then more to the 23rd, I think I heard?
Ninth.
Ninth and then 23rd.
And then 23rd, yep, and then a work session on the 30th.
So that's our plan. And then we have EDA meeting, which basically we have to approve the same things that we did. We have to approve the EDA budget, a levy, budget, budget. So that, that will follow immediately after this ends, so. Last call, otherwise entertain a motion to adjourn.
Just one quick question, so speaking of January, is there an MLK breakfast scheduled for January?
Yes.
There is, January 16th.
Sixteenth, and it's what, eight, is it eight or nine?
Eight AM.
Eight AM, okay.
And there's, the pond hockey is going to take off this year?
Yeah, so the, so the pond hockey, I believe, is on the, I don't want to get the date wrong, I think it's on the 20.
Twenty sixth.
Twenty sixth, okay. The, so it's just a one-day event this year. It's, it's something that the Rotary and the city have partnered up on to create a youth event down at Fireman's Park. This first year is going to be just sort of getting it up and running. There's going to be a couple of different levels of CCHA. Kids are going to be playing in four rinks on the pond during the course of day. And then there's going to be like a winter festival that goes along with it. Next year, though, what we're really preparing for is to actually have 12 rinks out on the, they're not as big as you think they are.
Well, still a lot.
Yeah, 12 rinks out on the, out on the ice. And then we'd have, actually have full weekend tournaments. So there's, there's lots of adult ones that are out there. There's only one kids one, and it's over at the Rosedale, or Rosedale over the weekend after Thanksgiving. So this would be something that we hope ends up being sort of a, the winter festival every year and ends up being a fundraiser to help support causes within the community, very cool.
Sorry, is it, is it 28?
I knew it was the 28, no, yeah, thank you, Kevin. But yeah, that's, that, that will be a pretty cool event and that's a weekend before the ice fishing contest.
So it's all day than the 28th?
Yep, starts about nine and gets done about five.
Facebook event, if anybody wants.
It's a good thing it's before the ice fishing contest.
Well, that's purposely planned.
Yep.
That would be a little more challenging.
Yes.
Remember that Zamboni thing we were talking about, we'd need it.
Yeah.
It's like, why do those players keep disappearing?
All right, anyone else, last call? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Gra, second by Councilmember Hatfield to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. We are adjourned and we will turn around and call the Chaska Economic Development Authority Meeting to order for Monday, December 19th, 2022 at 9:05. Elise, roll please.
Commissioner Hatfield?
Here.
Commissioner Hubbard?
Here.
Commissioner Wong?
Here.
Commissioner Gra?
Here.
President Winchell?
Here. All right, moves this to item three, adopting the agenda, corrections or additions to the agenda. If not, then entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hatfield, second by Councilmember Wong to adopt the agenda, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Motion carries, moves this to item four, approve previous meeting minutes from 5:16 and 9:12. Again, if there are no corrections or additions, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Moved, it's all moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Gra. Oh, and you guys are commissioners, sorry, messed that up. So we have a motion and a second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. She carries, all right. Moves to item five, adopt resolution number EDA 2022-146, adopting the 2023 EDA budget and EDA property tax levy payable for 2023.
President and Commissioners, the item in front of you tonight is to formally take action on the setting the tax levy and the budget for the EDA. This is something we have to do separate through the EDA because you, you are technically a separate board. The things to notice in this is, first of all, remember that in the EDA, we're not taking care of the building program and all those additional things. So it's just the base levy tax increase that could impact from that. So that's the inflation plus a little over 2% new growth that we need to capture in that. That's why we see the, just a little over 7% increase in the actual tax levy. And then from a, a budget perspective, you see a little bit greater increase in that. That's because one of the positions in staffing study is economic development coordinator. So that will actually get budgeted through the, through the EDA as opposed to a general fund. So they're both tax levy supported.
That's why it's 2448.
Yes, yep. I mean, normally it would be just the general increase, but that position is actually budgeted through the EDA. But it's part of our overall staffing study implementation. So like we mentioned before, the impact to the median value home of the $17.50 per month included this EDA one. But we again just have to take action on the budget and the, and the levies separately. So staff is recommending approval of the 2023 EDA budget and the EDA property tax levy for payable 2023.
All right, questions for Matt or Elise or anyone? And I would ask for a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember, Commissioner Hatfield.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wong. Again, this is a motion to adopt EDA Resolution 2022-146, adopting the 2023 EDA budget and an EDA property tax levy for payable 2023. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Anyone got any EDA business? Anyone? Anyone?
No.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion, motion by Commissioner Hatfield?
Hubbard.
Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hatfield. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. We are adjourned, happy holidays.